For those who don't know me, I'm Liz Maring. I am the new Inlet Keeper here at Cook Inlet Keeper. Also, retired biologist as well as a lawyer. So stepping into Bob's shoes and trying to do the best I can on this issue and other issues. I know it's important to a lot of people, a lot of our members and supporters and a lot of people on the Peninsula. I would like to just start really quick with a land acknowledgement and recognizing that I am down in Homer and this is the unceded territories of the Supiak and Nineha people. And I want to recognize their long land stewardship in this area and in Cook Inlet, which is the waters we're talking about. With that, I would like to just jump into things about this lease sale. And what I'd like to start with is just the nuts and bolts. And you all are here, so I assume some of these things are going to be things you've already seen or heard. But, you know, I think for anybody who doesn't, I just want to repeat them and say some of those things. So I'm gonna pull up our website, our landing page, and I'm gonna share my screen. Always is a challenge in my life. Okay, so you should be seeing the Stop Lease Sale 258 page. This is kind of our nuts and bolts page that we're having where we're sharing kind of all of the resources that we have. And if you scroll down a little, at the very top, you can sign the petition. I assume everybody here has already signed your petition. If you haven't, please do so. And as we keep saying, share it with five, 10, 50 friends. That's great. I don't have 50 friends. I've shared it with probably 50 acquaintances. And so, yeah, and so it'll have some of the details, kind of our bullet points of concerns, what you can do, and then information in the public hearings, which is really what we're talking about today. And so, again, this is nuts and bolts, but the timing and the registration links are here. These are all Zoom hearings. The times are all in Alaska times. And you can click on the register here, fill out your information and attend. And again, these hearings are next week. They are Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday next week. They're two-hour blocks. If you guys have any questions during them, before them, you guys can always call me. My office number is (235) 3459. If you email me, you can also, I'll send you my cellphone if you want to text me or email me during it. My email is liz@inletkeeper.org. And you probably may already have that from a bunch of places again. So that is the basics of the website. I would say that the other things on the website that we have are these two resources. There's one that's for inlet influencers and then one that's for social media toolkits. And in these kits, we actually have, I'm gonna open this one because I was making some updates, we have talking points. And so we've made some resources that you can get into and you can use to help structure your testimony. So these are resources you have, and we'll definitely talk about this more in just a minute. But these are some resources that we've made available. And again, I would encourage you, if you have other questions about the draft EIS or any of the things, please let me know. The one more nuts and bolts piece of testifying that I do want to make very clear is they're limiting testimony to five minutes apiece, which is actually kind of a long time. I think, as we all know, you know, it's both a long time and a short time. So thinking about that beforehand, we all know we talk faster when we're nervous. So usually I plan for five minutes and then I'm a little bit quicker because I talk faster, which I might be doing right now. So, you know, I think it's always fair to think things through, but also you guys know your style. You know your comfort in talking to people and you know kind of where your heart lies. I know that for me, I always like make an outline, not word for word, but I like write down kind of my, where I want to start. And that way it keeps me from forgetting something that I want to say. Or if I get lost and get unsure, I can go back and be like, oh, this is where I was. So that is the basics, I think, on nuts and bolts. I would like to talk about like how to testify in a public hearing and those types of things and how to testify specifically in this one. And again, and I think you guys probably all know this, but the lease sale is the proposed lease sale of lower Cook Inlet up to a million acres that would be leased out. And there's all types of concerns we have with this. The public comment period specifically is on the draft environment impact statement that was released October 29. And the comment period for written comments ends December 13 at 7:59 PM Alaska time. Certainly, people are willing, you know, able to submit their own comments too. If you testify and then want to follow up with your original comments, submitting them, you can sign our petition as like the easiest, lowest effort in saying to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management that you don't want the sale. Or you can follow through with more detailed information and saying, and I'd like to submit my own letters. And that website is, the Boeum's website will get you there, which is B-O-E-M.gov/AK258. You can see what I've been trying to cook in my web search. So this is where you have it. If you want to submit written notices, you can do so by clicking on this link, the regulations.gov website. And it will take you there. And you can submit comments. You can see that 14 comments have already been submitting. I know Inlet Keeper will be submitting comments. And so there is, there are some things that will be happening there. So if you want to, you are welcome to. If you, anybody wants any help submitting written comments, please let me know. But I do want to focus today mostly on kind of the oral comments that people can make next week at the hearings. I did want to just mention that as an aside. Before I get into how to testify, are there any questions about any of those pieces that I might have brushed over, glazed over, whatever? Okay. Hopefully that means I'm being perfectly clear. But also, if you have questions later, you know, I'm very much reachable. Please email me or call me and I will get back to you. Inlet Keeper Vaymore wants to support all of our members and supporters and community members in making their voices heard. So the structure of testifying is pretty straightforward. And I think it's one of those things that sounds really terrifying when you, when you think about doing it. But you, you all are really are experts in what you want for the inlet and you don't need to be scared of it. And so I think that's entirely fair to keep that in mind at any time. So I, I kind of have a simple structure and I actually was just thinking about making this another document for our webpage on just, you know, kind of the nuts and bolts of testifying. But I'm gonna just say it out loud and then we'll post it later this week, just as another resource in one of these toolkits, probably the inlet influencers. And so what I always do is I start with my name, who I am, where do I live? So, and then who are you? And so this can be pretty short, one or two sentences. Mine would be something like, good morning, good afternoon. My name's Liz Maring. I'm calling in today from Homer, Alaska, where I live. I also work for Cook Inlet Keeper and I have comments on behalf of our organization and their members. And so it's something like that. If you're calling in on behalf of an organization, you can certainly include that. If you're calling in on behalf of yourself, that's okay too, and very much encouraged. But I might add in something to the effect of just a little bit to tell them why you care. And so I am a small business owner. I am a fisherman. I am an Alaskan. I am a mother. I am a grandmother. I am endless, endless things of what, who you are, just to give it, you know, a name, a face and a connection. And then I always start next with my position on the issue. And I think it's easy to say right away. So I've said who I am and now I'm gonna say, I am calling today or appearing via Zoom today in order to oppose the lease sale in lower Cook Inlet. I am, you know, and so I think you can say that. This doesn't have to be, don't overthink these things. Don't worry too much about using the right words. I think sometimes governments get into the habit of making people think I have to say the magic language. Whether you say, we were asking you to adopt the no action alternative for the draft EIS, or you say, I oppose the lease sale and I want you to cancel it, they know it's the same thing. And so the rest is semantics. And even if they're trying to get you to play that game of, well, you didn't say the right magic words, that's, I tend to think that's nonsense. So don't get caught up on the magic words. I can always give you more magic words if you feel more comfortable with that. And so I think it's equally fair to say, I oppose the lease sale. I equally fair to say, I would like you to protect lower Cook Inlet from oil and gas drilling. Or equally fair to say, we'd like the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management to adopt the no action alternative, which is to say, we'd like you to not take this action. And then the next thing I'm gonna go into is kind of my personal story, my personal concerns. Why does this matter to me? Because again, I want to tie this back to how this affects my life. I'm a real person. I'm a real Alaskan. I am concerned. And so for me, some of the things that I've heard recently that resonate with me is I hear people who remember the Exxon Valdez spill and just remember how terrifying that was and how scared people were who relied on fish for subsistence to not be able to rely on fish because there was an oil spill. And then I would tie it back to, to some of our talking points. And again, I think, you know, we've made these talking points. I would look at these talking points and preparing and see which, which one of these or something else, it may be something we haven't thought of resonates with you. And so if the, and I, any way you do this is right. I can only tell you like the things that come into my head. There's are many ways to do this. But what I would think about doing with the Exxon Valdez is saying, I, you know, and I was not around for that. I think I was nine, six, something like that. So, but if I, you know, if I was saying, I remember the Exxon Valdez and it's scary to have that other happening in Cook Inlet where we could have it coming to Ketchumac Bay, to Kodiak, to the waters where I fish and I play and I birdwatch and whatever those things are. And then I would, I would talk about, for me, I'm gonna likely talk about this 19% chance of one or more large oil spills happening over the next 40 years of development. And so that's a one in five chance. And we're talking large oil spills. We're talking 42,000 gallons or, and more. So more than 42,000 gallons. And so I'm gonna talk about that. And that would be my next connection to Exxon Valdez. It's not just the Exxon Valdez was scary. It's that me thinking through, we have a very good chance of having another oil spill in, of at least 42,000 gallons because of the sale. And that is going to impact my life directly. And one in five, that is more serious than Russian roulette. You know, that's a one in six chance. You know, that's playing with fire. And so those are the types of things that I might talk about if that was my tact. Similarly, if you're worried about, you know, if you're a business owner and you're worried about bear viewing, I think you can talk about how you make your living and how bears are important to your living and how you can only imagine losing business by flying over drilling platforms or in case of an oil spill with oil ending up on the shores where bears are clamming and those types of things. So I think you can tie it together with those points. We've tried to put in some of the kind of major points, again, in here with some of the draft EIS things. And I will tell you, the draft EIS is not, is not great. They're long documents and they, but they say a lot of things. And if you don't know about National Environmental Protection Act, NIPA, which is what requires the draft EIS, it's mostly a document that allows you to, allows us to know the risks. It doesn't say whether the risks are good or bad. So it's gonna mostly give us risks and then let us decide. But what we do know is a lot of these draft EIs say things are low risk. And so, for example, in this one, one of the weaknesses that I've identified is that the draft EIS, Environmental Impact Statement, says that there will be increased greenhouse gas emissions from this lease sale. And so it says that we will be increasing our emissions at a time when climate change is really affecting Alaska and the world. And so that might be something to talk about. The draft EIS doesn't then get into how that impacts us. So it doesn't get into our fisheries. What's the impact of that increased emissions on our fisheries? What's our impact of that increased emissions on our beluga whales? What's that impact on our erosion and our coastal communities? It doesn't get into those things. It just says there's gonna be increased emissions. And then it says it's really hard to look into things further type, is the type of thing it says. And so I think it's fair to say, you know, these impacts, if you want to get into something specific, these impacts need to be further analyzed so we know exactly what risks we're taking. But again, I, I don't want to overcrowd your creativity, your intelligence or any of that and to use your own judgment. If you're one of those people that loves reading technical documents, the draft EIS is, I'll pull it up. It's again on Boeum's website, so boeum.gov/AK258. And it is right here. So right down here, the draft environmental impact statement, you can just open it up. It's gonna take a few minutes to load because it is a long document. You can look into it. Don't feel like you need to. You are an expert. You can call in without ever having opened this document. If you have concerns and you want to talk through what you're gonna say beforehand, please call me. I'm happy to talk through it. For us, I think we, regardless of which tact you want to say, we want our government listening to us and we want the government to hear your voices. And you are, you know, you are constituents and they should be listening to you. And so calling in and worrying too much about having magic words is a disservice to you because you have whatever magic words there are. And we have no control over the outcome in some ways, like they're gonna make decisions that they're gonna make. But all we can do is take the action to tell them what our concerns are and hope that they listen. And then follow through with next steps if we need to. But this is the action that we have right now.
I have a statement?
Yes.
Yes, this is Becky Long from Susitna River Coalition in Talkeetna. And sometimes if you want to get a little wonky, if, you know, when you're facing a draft EIS, like if you're particularly interested in greenhouse gas emissions or cumulative impacts or something like that. I mean, you can focus on maybe one or two sections in the draft EIS. I mean, I mean, you know, in terms of getting talking points or something. I mean, sometimes I follow my own interests in the, in the EIs and, you know, if you want to get a little wonky, that's just a suggestion. Other than that, everything you say, Liz, is right on. Thank you.
Awesome. I'm glad I'm not, not saying anything crazy. And I think that's a really good point. Like when we, I pulled it up and now I've closed it. When you look at the draft EIS, there's a table of contents at the very beginning. You can skip it. You're like, oh, I only care about belugas. You know, Ctrl F is your friend. You can search for beluga and only read the sections that talks about belugas. If you only care about seabirds or oil spills or whatever it is, you can, don't feel like you have to read the whole thing to, to read the parts that you care about. And so you can see it's broken.
Yeah, you can even say, I mean, you can even like skim it and see that it's bullshit or whatever and just say the whole thing is inadequate. I mean, then, then you're giving them what they want specifics, but you know, you're focusing on an issue that you're interested in.
Yes. Yeah. And I think that's entirely fair too, to say, and it, and it is inadequate. So just so the background on this one specifically, the Trump administration had originally pushed this through back in a little, over three months last year, which for draft environmental impact statements is unheard of. They usually take years. So this is like the fastest draft environmental impact statement of all times. And so the Biden administration has updated it and I've done a comparison of their updates. They really just changed the length. So they've actually think there's more, more fossil fuels than previously imagined. So we're gonna have more emissions and a longer time. So it's gone from 38 years to 40 years. And then the other thing that they've changed is the climate change analysis. So last year's draft EIS, believe it or not, said that the oil sale would, or the lease sale would actually decrease our climate emissions, which I think seemed completely ridiculous. They've lost in court on that a number of times now. And so it now says that it will increase emissions, but they haven't updated the other parts. So like, if you look at it, you know, they don't get into how it's gonna impact commercial fishing or the economy with this increase in emissions. So those are the key things. But I think it's important to remember that this got pushed through in a very short timeframe for political reasons. It is inadequate. And so even if you just want to say it's inadequate because it doesn't consider the impacts to our lives as Alaskans, that's a very easy, short statement you can make without, you know, without having to get into it too much. And again, I don't, you know, we appreciate everybody calling in to testify. And, you know, I know a lot of people don't have time to read a 265-page document. So read what you can. If you want to just read our talking points, that's fine too. And then just to pivot back to, to it, after I've made my pitch, my story. And so now I, you know, considering I've talked maybe two or three minutes or less, whatever you're comfortable with, even if it's just to call and say, I oppose this because of whatever. I then close and I go back to what I'm asking them to do. And so I've started with it. I started with who I am, my position. I've told my story. And then I'm reiterating my position. And so I want to leave them with that important thing. If, again, if there's something poignant that you think is really important to like leave them with as a final say, you can do that. But again, you can just say, again, I urge you to cancel the lease sale or I urge you to adopt the no action alternative and to protect Cook Inlet or whatever it is that, you know, that, that sums up your position. And then, you know, I tend to say, thank you for allowing me to testify, whatever, bye. I would say, I know I have a bad habit of swearing. If you guys have been in meetings with me, you have heard me swear. I try not to on Zoom calls, especially recorded ones, or when I'm in court. This is not the right place for swearing. So like, think about that. It's, it's fair to be pissed at this and to be upset. And I have to say, sometimes I go home after work and I let loose on how, I think this is absurd in colorful language, but I would encourage you to not, not go down that road while testifying. I know this sounds stupid, but I feel like I have to say it just because it's helpful. And yeah, and so I think that is really kind of my talking points for the, you know, how to testify and how to testify about this particular lease sale. I would love to open it up for questions or other discussion or other ideas. If other people have testified and they have something that they feel like was really helpful or really unhelpful, I'm gonna stop my screen share. Yeah, just let me know.
Liz, I wonder if it makes sense to sign up for all three days and listen. I realize we probably can only testify once, but does it make sense? Is there anything to learn by?
I think there can be. Sometimes, you know, we expect at least a few industry groups to testify. And so sometimes it makes sense to listen and hear what they're saying and then respond. I, I try not to get too wrapped up in responding to people that are like, because I don't want to just reiterate their points. I want to pivot back to why that doesn't make any sense. And so like, if somebody, and I, I'm not saying this is what will happen next week, but if somebody was like, but our PFD, I want to say, yes, I get a PFD too from oil, but it's not sustainable long-term because we subsidize our oil. It doesn't actually help us and this is not the right place for it. So I want to pivot back to, and that maybe even wasn't the best pivot, pivot back to the things that I think are important here and not let their narrative control my testimony completely. I think it's just not super effective, but I don't think it's a bad idea. If you hear something, you can say, you know, Mr. So-and-so, again, you know, be respectful. He indicated that there's a very low, low risk of an oil spill. And I, you know, I can tell you, I've been looking it up. The Deepwater Horizon had a very low probability of an oil spill and it would never reach the coast. And so like, you know, you can pivot that. You can say, he says it's a very low risk. That's the exact same thing they said before the Deepwater Horizon disaster that polluted it and cost us billions of dollars. And so like, again, you're pivoting back to your point and you're pointing out their ridiculousness. But I don't, you know, don't getting bogged down in like some of the, I think of Facebook as that like echo chamber where you just scream back and forth doesn't help, in my opinion.
So, but I guess I wouldn't be able to respond. Like I plan on testifying the first night. And I probably won't have a chance to respond to later ones, nor will I have a chance to really address that in the second go around. So I guess it's a kind of a one-shot deal.
It is. And it just depends on when you go. So like, you're gonna register. We don't have a lot of control over who they're gonna call when. And so like, I don't have a good sense of whether or not, you know, you know, it could be that they have, you know, who knows how many people register the first night, but you're the only one that shows up right at 6:30 and somebody else shows up at seven and they call you then. What, you know, we don't have a lot of control over that. So I, I would plan it around mine. If you happen to go right after the oil industry and you want to tie that in, you can. I don't think you need to. And the same thing goes for going to all three nights. I will be going to all three nights. Only testifying once, obviously, but I just want to hear, you know, are we having good turnout? What are people saying? What's, you know, working and what's not working? And then are we getting a lot of other opposition from the other side? Has it been 10 people calling in? So I want to know those things. So I'm gonna go and listen. And again, you know, if you want to just go one night and you know you can go on Tuesday night and that's the night that works for you, do that. Don't worry about what's the most strategic option. I don't think we have a most strategic option. Like it just is, we need to get people there. We need to have Boeum hear from Alaskans and the concerns and the fears and just putting it out there and making sure that the Biden administration knows there are a lot of people here on the ground that are concerned about this. So that is really like, my goal for next week is to hopefully show that there's not just some nonprofit organizations that are concerned, but that Alaskans, that fishermen, that businessmen are worried.
Are they in DC? Are they zooming from DC or where? Is it a group of people that are all, they're all in the same location or is people from disparate parts of the country all over?
I, my guess is that, it's, I think it's unclear. So it's all just guessing at this point. My guess is that their Alaska staff will be attending. So Jim Kendall, who's the director in Alaska, or the Alaska Regional Director, whatever his title is. My guess, he will attend. There might be a project lead that will attend or some other people. My guess is because of COVID, they're not gonna be in all one room together just because of the risk. I think people will be coming from different places. I also don't know how many people they'll even have on the call to listening. You know, obviously somebody's gonna be taking notes and making a record, but I, you know, it could be one or two people. I don't know. And frankly, given the times, I wouldn't expect a huge DC presence. 6:30, that's what, 10:30 to 12:30? Or that's pretty late at night. My guess is it's gonna be mostly Alaska staff. Or, or Pacific Coast staff. I guess I could see, you know, we have some regional staff.
So Deb Holland won't be on the call?
I don't think, I would love it if she'd be on the call.
Talk to her as a woman, woman. Yeah.
Yeah. And I just maybe to remind people, you know, a lot of these people in this administration are friends. Like, we, you know, it's, I know Biden is, is going forward with this. He does have the ability to cancel this. There have been, there's lawsuits. I know I've gotten questions about that and whether or not the lawsuits require him to actually hold the sale. I do not believe they do from a legal standpoint. I believe that the Biden administration, Department of Interior and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management have the authority to cancel the sale. They may just, you know, be waiting, but I think we need to give them every excuse to do what, what is right and to not have it. And you can see Biden out talking at the COP about how important climate change is. I think we just need to give them the information so that they could. And so I do think, you know, it's fair to remember that, that they are out there trying to, you know, to talk this talk. And we're just gonna be calling and asking to walk the walk.
Yeah. Cool. Yeah.
Are there any other questions or thoughts? Oh, sorry, that's my phone. I'll figure out how to cancel that. I'm technically not savvy. They're new phones and I don't use them very well. Anybody else, any other questions or thoughts? Again, you might have a brilliant way you've testified in the past and you would like to suggest it because other people might find something that resonates more with what you say than what I say. As I said, there's no magic way to do this, I don't think. I think there is just being you and doing what you're comfortable with.
Hi Liz, this is Alex. I have a question. This is all new to me in terms of the government. The people that you're gonna be testifying to are, what is this group? And what is their role in terms of, once they've heard, collected the information, either written, petitioned or heard it? What's, what is their, who are they and what's the next step after that?
That's a great question. I'm sorry. I, I think I glossed over that in some of the process stuff in the beginning. So the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management is the one that's hosting the sale. So it's the state of the, sorry, the federal agency that's hosting the sale. They're also the federal agency that's complying with the National Environmental Protection Act in having the draft environmental impact statement. And part of the requirements for doing that are have And part of the requirements for doing that are having public hearings and letting the public weigh in. So they've opened this comment period. At the end of the, of the comment period, and so that's actually in December, they will, the department, so the, again, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management will consider all of the information they've received, all the technical comments, all of the written comments, all of the opposition, all of the pro, all of the information. And they will issue a final environmental impact statement. And there's no super set timeframe on that. After that happens, they could move forward with the sale. And so during that environmental, final environmental impact statement, this gets a little bit in the weeds, they'll basically recommend a certain option. And so a draft environmental impact statement says that there's option one or zero, I don't remember which is here. And it says that, you know, the proposed alternative, there's one that's like, proposed alternative is the one that they've suggested. So it's the lease sale. And then there's a second action. And so here is the second action is no action. And so it says, what's the environmental benefit if, if we don't do nothing? And then there's other, other options. So they'll say an alternative, and in this case, there's three A, B and C, and they're all about beluga whales. So like, how do we modify the first plan in order to like, take care of beluga whales? Or how do we modify the plan for alternatives for, to help the sea otters? So they have these different options. At the end, they'll choose one of them. So they might've heard all these comments and they said, we're really concerned about the beluga whales. So we're going to adopt, you know, action three, which is going to allow a lot of lease sales still, but you know, some extra protections for the belugas. They can also adopt this action, which is action two, which says, no action. We're not going to do this lease sale. It's too damaging. It's not appropriate. Or they can adapt to the first action, which is the proposed action. So it's probably the one that gets the most information in the draft environmental impact statement. And so it'll say, this is the proposed action and you know, that's going to get the most, the most weight of what they're considering. And so at the end, again, when they do the final environmental impact statement, they'll choose one of them. And what we're hoping that they choose is there's no action alternative, cancel the lease sale. And at that point, once bone has made that decision, there's actually a number of other steps that they'll have to take. But it'll end up with, if they choose to go forward with the sale, a notice of intent for the sale. And then there's 30 days and then there's a sale. So there can't be an actual sale for those 30 days between the notice of intent to hold sale and the sale. And so if this all was to happen, we would, we could potentially see this sale happening, I would think in late spring, if all of those things were to happen. Does that? I know that gets a really technical, but
that was, that, that helped me.
Okay.
But so my next question then is with the other oil rigs and oil platforms we've had in Cook Inlet, what's been the history of their environmental impact?
That's another great question. So right now we don't have any, well, we don't have any active drilling in Lower Cook Inlet. So let me pull up a map just because I, it helps me. I was trying to do it quickly, but I'll, well, I'll keep talking while I try to find a map that's easy to pull up. So Lower Cook Inlet's been protected. There are 14 active leases in Lower Cook Inlet and they're all with Hillcorp. So Hillcorp bought up 14 active blocks in Lower Cook Inlet. And I am now going to share my screen again. Back in 2017, you should see the map. Those are the green blocks are the ones that have already been sold. And this whole area is in yellow would be up for sale. This is all federal waters. These blocks are in exploration. We expect that Hillcorp would be looking to expand their land holdings in order to make it more profitable to do drilling. So that is where we are in Lower Cook Inlet. So we have not had it at this point. And actually historically, all of the leases that have been held in Lower Cook Inlet have been canceled because of lack of industry interest. I think because it's hard to get to, we have high tides, we have tricky waters and all of those things. As you all likely know, Upper Cook Inlet is a different story. So that's going to be up here above, above this lease sale. That's all state waters and we do have a history of drilling in Upper Cook Inlet. And we have unfortunately a history of, of problems. It certainly has been, you know, I think we call it occasionally the birthplace of oil and gas development in Alaska, you know, because it was back in this, you know, the 50s and the 60s that oil and gas development in Kenai Peninsula really took off first onshore and then offshore. They're largely owned now by Hillcorp and they are old. And so we have a lot of really old platforms in Upper Cook Inlet. So you're talking the 60s, 50s, 60s and 70s that they were being built and a lot of really old underwater pipelines. And as you would expect, we've seen kind of the gambit of issues up there. So Cook Inlet has certainly seen issues with blowout, issues with leaking oil and gas pipelines. We've gotten really lucky on some laden tankers that have, there was one, a number of years ago, the, now the name is escaping me. It broke free. It was laden with crude oil. It broke free of its mooring during winter storm, but it just went to shore and it didn't get punctured. But again, we're just getting lucky. Like that's not a, I don't like living by luck. It'd be nice to like, know what's, what the actual plan is. Like, how are we going to stop that from happening in the future? Let's just not hope that the tanker won't get punctured on the rocks. And so the other thing I guess I would note in Upper Cook Inlet is we do a lot of dumping of toxic waste back into Upper Cook Inlet from our oil and gas platforms. And so that has had impacts. It's really hard to specifically identify specific impacts. And so where the state measures those, those toxic wastes is very far away. They're called, I'm now getting technical again, but they're in mixing zones. And so they dump it, then they go a mile away, then they measure the toxicity and they say it's fine. But we do, we dump a lot of wastewater and of other toxic chemicals, including possibly radioactive materials, but not a lot of testing to see the specific impacts. But we, you know, I think it's clear that we know our salmon are doing great. Our Pacific cod has been struggling with climate change. Our belugas are declining. So we know there's a lot of species in Cook Inlet that are struggling. And I think it's fair to say that cumulative impacts of all of the things we do in, in the inlet with this. And I'm not, you know, we, we have, we have other problems. Sewerage dumping is certainly not great. But all of these things are, are, are hard. And a lot of times what we've been saying as a state government is, well, we can't point to the specific reason the belugas are dying, so we can't do anything. And so we can't say it's the pollution. I will note, because I went down that road, on the pollution issue, the draft D I S says that they'll be reinjecting that pollution underground. And so what they do is they drill a second well and they actually reinject that, those toxins instead of releasing them to the water. So that's actually a better thing in Lower Cook Inlet, if that's actually what they do. And that's actually going to be the EPA, not the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management that makes those calls. And so hopefully that's what happens. But in the end, we'd rather just not have oil and gas in Lower Cook Inlet. Does that answer your question? I feel like I'm rambling again.
Yeah, I definitely covered that. And then two quick questions. I don't want to monopolize. There's probably other questions. So B O E M, the organization that you're testifying for, do they seem to, do they have a certain slant?
I think that's really hard. I, they're a federal agency. And so I think it's certainly like, like all federal agencies, they are set up kind of by the political structure they're under. And so you saw B O E M, Boam, moving very quickly towards offshore lease selling under Trump because it was one of his priorities. And so the Trump administration definitely prioritized it and pushed a lot of things forward. You now see the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management under the Biden administration, talking a lot more about renewable energies. Like what other options do we have? You can go to, you know, to their main website and they'll say their priorities. And one of them is to consider, you know, our, our energy resources. And so whether or not that's oil and gas or renewable energies, and even on their website, I just pulled it up. Their first page is renewable energy. They're really pushing offshore wind as an option. Because they, you know, because again, I think it's somewhat politically driven. It's part of the Biden administration's priorities is this offshore wind or other renewable resources.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. And my last quick question is, you're pushing from this meeting, it sounds like you're, you're advocating for more personal testimony. And I'm a believer that it doesn't matter what, if it's personal or written, either one is just valuable.
Yes. No, I think that's true. I think if you are not comfortable, I, I guess I
It's not a comfort level. It's just there's different ways to testify. And I don't think you should ever put on people saying comfortable. It's just, some people are better writers, some people have time, there's lots of different things. But I think they carry, I believe they carry the same weight is my question to you. Do you think it carries the same weight?
Um, yes, I, I guess I do think it carries the same weight. I think there's certainly like levels, like sometimes, you know, people are like, well, I don't, you know, signing on our straightforward petition, which I will put in the chat is, you know, not super, you know, doesn't carry a lot of weight. And I think there's probably an argument to that, but if that's the 30 seconds you have for this issue, I totally get that too. And so don't, you know, don't not do it because it's not a huge weight. And I think testifying and written, I think it's probably a toss up on the weight. I think both of them happen. This Zoom in specifically is trying to help people feel comfortable and want to testify. And so I think that's my focus on this meeting. That's not to say people shouldn't do written testimony or that it doesn't have huge value. It's also not to say that just because you've testified orally, doesn't mean you can't submit written comments. I think you still can. I think you still should. And so it's not to say that. And so I'm sorry if my language maybe wasn't the best on comfort level. Whatever your skillset is, I think using it to oppose the lease sale is awesome.
No, and I agree with you and I really, and I want to applaud you for the resource page you sent out with all the different options. I think you did a real nice job on that.
Thank you. I know Taylor, our communications person has worked really hard on it too. So and if you guys have other ideas, if you're like, you know, another document on such and such would be really helpful. You know, I'm newer to this job and always love feedback. So there's other things we can do where we want to support you all as our members, supporters and as other Alaska community members or non-Alaska community members if we have them on.
Good questions, Alex. Thanks for answering them, just so more of us can hear. But yeah.
Yeah, those were great questions and thanks for touching a lot of the things that I glossed over. I think sometimes when you breathe each sleep it, you gloss over things that other people may not be doing because they're not spending all their time on this.
Yeah. And I just finished reading a series of essays by Kathleen Dean Moore, who has framed the oil industry as really, I, I can't articulate it well enough, but it will give you an idea of what we're dealing with. The, the, the grasp and the grip that they have globally with our leadership and all of that. It just will give you a deeper understanding of what is going on and why this is happening and to get underneath that. Because this is a long, long effort on their part to take away other alternatives and guilt trip the public in, you know, not doing the right things individually. You know, it's, it's a deep, deep story. And I could share that link with Liz and put it out to all of you just to give you a way bigger picture of what we're dealing with.
If you, do you want to just put it in the chat and that way everybody could see it?
Sure. I, I'm not able to think and write at the same time, but I will, let me try to do that. I'll stop talking and I'll just do it.
Okay, that'd be great. Cause I think that's it. Yeah. I think there's all types of things and we're also at Inlet Keeper, we've been trying to blog a lot. I'm actually working on right, one right now on spills, you know? And so there's, again, if there's other things, you know, and Alex, maybe even further answer your question. I think the other really active way to make a difference here is to write op eds. And so if you feel the need to, or the desire to, you know, share this with the ADN to say, you know, these are my four concerns. I'm an Alaskan. These, you know, we have some guidance on our website to doing op eds. And again, happy to support people that are doing them. If you want another set of eyes as a proofreader or whatever, I'm happy to do whatever I can to do op eds. There's so many ways to make a difference and to, you know, to do climate action and to do action to protect the inlet and protect our fisheries and protect our communities. And I think they're all equally valuable and worth it. And we want to support all of them because I think there's no one right way to, to stop this lease sale and protect the inlet. Rika, I tried to help by finding an ID, didn't find the article easily, so I can't help.
Oh, I'm just, oh, here. Oh, I found it. I found it. Okay.
Oh, and Taylor just put in some more of the resources on the op eds. Letters to the editor. I was trying to do LTE in my head. So there's, yeah, other, other plays you want to get the word out, please. And again, if you want support, you know, email, call me. I am always pretty much accessible when, except when I'm sleeping.
So can I, I'm just going to see if this works that I copied. Wow. There it is. Oh, I have to send it.
Yay. Awesome. Thanks for that resource. I know we have eight more minutes, but I don't want to just hang out with for no reason. If there's other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you all so much for attending this Zoom call and we appreciate it and we'll be posting it. I think on a YouTube channel for other people who may not have been able to make it. But again, thanks for your interest in this issue. It's really important to us and encouraging to have people.
Thank you so much, Liz. And as I'm looking at the screen, looking at you, you remind me of Greta Thunberg. You look like her with your hair pulled back and the ponytail. And you're like Greta out there. Thank you.
And that's, it's a flattering comparison. I only wish I could be quite as effective as she is.
You look like her on my screen right now and I'm just utterly grateful. So
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. We appreciate you so much. Have a great day.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.